Thanks for coming, everybody. Let's skip the minutes and go right to the... Is that scheduled for six thirty anyways? Uh, we're continuing with stormwater here in Gavin Road. Is that scheduled for six thirty, look?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll insert a motion to reopen the...
I'll make a motion that we reopen this area.
Public hearing?
Second.
Second, all there. Okay. All right, um, start over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, for the record, Jeffrey Brim with Mines and Rem Corporation, representing the applicant. Also here tonight is Karen Hubick Kelly.
It's fine.
From Bond Construction.
The Bond girl.
Yes.
Bond girl.
How many times have you been called that, right? And you're who? I'm sorry?
Dale Kylie, I'm the attorney for Bond.
Okay.
Mr. McLaughlin, he was here last time, if you recall, he's not going to be here, I believe, tonight. Uh, where we left it off is we gave a presentation and, uh, we quickly went through the Whitman and Bingham, uh, few letters that were dated that same day.
I think he was done.
And I think we put it off, let's see, uh, we had to respond to that letter.
Yep.
And we have done that.
Mm-hmm.
And on February eighteenth, we sent you two letters. I won't bore you with reading them unless you want me to, but one was a response to the Whitman and Bingham letter, uh, item by item, and, uh, some of which were, uh, the responses were we're going to ask for a waiver, and then, uh, the following letter, uh, also dated February eighteenth, is our formal waiver request, and there are two waiver requests. But I probably should go over those, if you do. We had asked for a waiver request with this property of two foot intervals. This is a very large site, and maybe, as you know, it's just a gravel operation, and so we think the ten-foot contours are appropriate. However, we've been talking to Wes, and there are a couple of instances, uh, where he wants a little bit more detail. We can concur with that, uh, and he's really concerned about where we come close to the property lines here and here, uh, to make sure that we're not going on to abutting properties. Uh, we can do that at that elevation. He also, we also requested that the, um, plan be waived to a scale that's appropriate for this, because it's a hundred and twenty. He thinks, uh, it's not a waiver request, it's actually the, he recommended that it go from a hundred and twenty to twenty to forty, and as we're talking, he's really looking at these critical areas, so whether we do a four-sheet plan or we work it out so that we could just have detail where the areas are critical, we can do that as well.
Yeah, that'd be sufficient.
There's a technical issue, just to make sure that we're not impeding on abutting properties, that makes sense. And then the other waiver was estimated high groundwater elevation, and again, I, I mentioned that we're going to be cutting down sixty, about sixty feet through, or up to sixty feet throughout the site, and it's really impossible to do these testing now, and we just basically asked to pre-postpone till they get to the right elevation to make sure that there's four feet of, uh, ground before the groundwater table, which also ties into one of his other comments, uh, which we can get to, where is, he requests, it's the state, stormwater regulations require you do a mounding analysis if you're within four feet of that water table. Uh, again, it's inappropriate at this time, because we don't know where that is, but we intend to be four feet above the water table in our instances, so we wouldn't need a groundwater mounding analysis. Uh, so we had asked that, let me quickly go through my other letter, um, the stormwater letter. So, there are some wetlands, if you don't mind, is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
No, good.
And then Wes is, I'm gonna, yeah, you're gonna wanna respond to these. So there's some, uh, wetland right here, that we're showing with topography, and there needs to be a hundred-foot buffer to that, and we're not proposing any work in that buffer, so we showed the buffer now on our latest plan, showing that no work is done there. We also showed the buffer in all the wetlands, uh, even in the areas not involved with our operation. Second comment is, uh, the two-foot waiver request, which I just went through. And the third comment is the groundwater request waiver, which I went through. Uh, we add a note nine, that the areas are going to be long-inseated, as Karen, as Karen discussed at the meeting, as opposed to the mitigation proposed by the other company using our site materials. They're gonna use, basically, you know, stockpile up the loam, do the work in that phase, when she's done, spread the loam out, and have her seed the area. Wes is gonna comment on that as well. Uh, the stormwater standards have ten standards that we're supposed to go through, item by item, I'm not going to go through them with you, but we did provide a supplemental drainage report, and in that report, right at the beginning, we go through each of the ten requirements and how we meet them. And, uh, I guess Wes will, again, comment on that, we believe we meet all ten. Um, some, now, the stormwater issues, I don't know if you want to go into detail, but we've basically dealt with all of them. Uh, Wes's response, which I just got tonight, indicates a couple more small revisions are necessary to, uh, to, for his review and for him to feel comfortable. We quickly went over that, we don't think that those minor adjustments are a problem. We'll have to do a supplemental two, of course, but it's not, it shouldn't be an issue. Just see if the SWIP requirement, we have to file with EPA, obviously, and probably should make a condition of approval that when we do that, a copy goes to the town. It's required anyway, that the EPW director or somebody in town gets a copy of that, uh, and we would have no problem with that. Uh, same with the sediment basins, so there, there are some conditions that we'd like to include in here. I don't think Wes is opposed to any of them, such as, besides, you know, the ten, temporary sediment basins be done at that time. And, uh, he does have an issue with one of our points of analysis, uh, that he, and he'll go over with you, that he wants us to change that a little bit. Again, because of the way we're dealing with the ground, with the stormwater, I don't think that's an issue. Basically, we're maintaining it all on-site. And, uh, the last two comments, sixteen due to the printing, we wanted to keep this scale, but like I said earlier, in the, your critical areas, we'll either supplement that with a separate plan or turn it into a four-sheet plan set. We just, we could deal with either one. And he asked to be, butters, to be added, and we added those butters. So I'll be quick and brief, and I'm sure Wes will go over his items in more detail, unless there's any other questions. And before I sit down, Mr. Chair, we're hoping that because we believe that the comments on Whitman and Bingham's letter dated today are, are technical and are relatively easy to, um, meet, we're hoping, and I hate to always do this, but I will ask, and as my father always said, doesn't hurt to ask, we're hoping that the board could give an approval tonight, conditionally meeting the final requirements from Whitman and Bingham, and let us deal with the technical matters. So, that's my presentation.
They all gotta say that.
What's that?
They all, but they all say the same thing. I'll be good. Wes?
Sure. Um, the first item is, sorry, I'll quickly go to the plan. Uh, first item, we had a question about the floodplain. So, uh, the Otter River runs through the, uh, federal property.
Yep.
To the east, and there's floodplain associated with that, and so Jeffrey and I were just talking before. I was just questioning if there's any of the floodplain leaks into the property in this corner here, and Sue's gonna take a look at that, see if we need to adjust the grading a little bit, maybe to, uh, avoid that. Uh, one of the other comments that I had later on in the letter, uh, just had to do with showing a little more fine grading in here, just to make sure that all the grading is shown on their property and not, uh, leaking onto the federal property.
Is there a high watermark, I mean, that's, is that in the floodplain out there?
Well, that's what we were talking about, so, there is definitely floodplain on the abutting property, because the Otter River...
On the other side of that hill.
Because the Otter River runs here, but there's a, kind of a low point that leaks into their property, and that's, uh, we were questioning whether or not the floodplain actually leaks on their property.
I've seen that in the worst conditions out there.
And that's, and that's why, I know this, when they play around with the dam and any kind of real rain, rain event, I know there are a fair amount of flooding that goes on in town.
I mean, railroad tracks and, and, the railroad tracks.
Yes.
Right up to the walk, you know, walk was up to railroad tracks.
Exactly, so that's what I, you know, it's often we were asking to see if that was some of the limits of the floodplain that was shown on the map. And the problem is, is the, the maps haven't been updated in, in, I don't know, almost forty years now. So the elevation isn't shown on that floodplain that the, the federal government has, so, um, it's one of those things they're gonna take a look at and see if it extends into the property. I mean, if a slight bit of, of grading needs to be adjusted, they'll, they'll adjust the grading.
Yeah.
Kinda, obviously, leave the, the earth removal out of the floodplain. They don't want to get into that issue.
That's doing you a favor.
So that blends in...
You tend to point any debt big. But it floods down there.
Yeah, no, exactly, no, we would wanna leave everything dry, so that nothing...
There was a higher water recorded down there, and it was...
And so it, it blends into, item number two had to do with, like I said, the two-foot contours, where they're asking for a waiver. We don't have an issue within the, the pit itself, like I said, we were just asking where it ties into the exterior of the site, just to make sure it does stay onto their property and not onto the abutting property. Uh, number three had to do with the, the testing with regards to the infiltration. And I know in the past, the board has, um, condition approvals, what they do to testing as the project goes along.
Right, because you can't test.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a VD right now.
So we don't have, you know, obviously, our, we don't have an issue with it, and the board doesn't have an issue with it, I know, which the board's done in the past, so they have conditioned approval, such that the testing is done as needed. Number four, they added the note to the plan, so we have no issue with that. Number five had to do with just making sure that, um, under your stormwater bylaw, that it puts it into the mass, uh, stormwater management policy, so that Jeffrey stated, they did give us the documentation that they meet all ten standards, and so we have no issue with that. They, they showed how they meet the ten standards. Number six had to do with, um, how they did their drainage calcs, um, just the way they modeled it a little bit, and so, I actually think it's gonna help them if they, the suggestion that I make on the letter, I think it's gonna help them because it's to take water out of this low point, the way it's modeled, and so it's gonna show less of a flooding impact there.
Yep.
And so when they do their, um, calculation, that has to go to, I think it's item number ten in here, it's actually gonna help them with that calculation. Number seven has to do with this berm here, so they do show the berm, such that the water is all directed into the low point. Before, there was no berm shown here, and so some of the water would have leaked out of the property, and so now they're showing a ten-foot berm there. Um, and then they're gonna, like I said, they're gonna show some more of that fine-tuned grading there, as part of that comment.
But we also have a mislabeled contour, too.
Yeah, that's, as they, as they show the two-foot contours, they'll clean that up, too, at the same time. Um, number eight had to do with another item in the drainage calcs, it just needs to be added in there. It's, I don't think it's gonna affect, uh, the overall scheme, what they're trying to do, but it's gonna at least show the calcs the correct, I guess, the, the most accurate way, such that they're showing there's no increase to the property, the problem is, it's all gravel out there now, um, so there's really no water that leaves the property. Everything was, was in the ground. And that's the good thing about the way they're gonna do it now with the low-inseed and getting grass growing out there afterwards. So that was gonna be a question, I know, under the previous approval, uh, submittal, it was gonna be the, the paper and all that, and at least that's gone, now it's gonna be grass, that's gonna be a huge improvement. Number nine, actually, is gonna be a similar comment to number six, so they'll, they said, they'll take care of that, and I think it's gonna help them. Uh, number ten, we have no further comment, they provided the additional calculations. Number eleven has to go with regards to the waiver, that they already talked about the testing. Uh, number twelve, talks about the drawdown time, um, this area will have to drain within seventy-two hours, and so on their calculations, they use a, a number that's, uh, consistent with the soil map, which is the sand, obviously, it's gravel pit. It's the best number you can use under the, the state's recommended, um, infiltration rates. And so all we do is suggest that they use that rate to do a quick drawdown calc to show that it drains within seventy-two hours. I don't think it's gonna be an issue, but they should just provide the calc, and I don't care if they, they should just provide it now and just be done with it, and then I'll just, I think... If, if it wasn't all gravel out here, they wouldn't be doing the project, so we, we trust that it's gonna be all gravel out here, so... Number thirteen has to do with the mounting study. I know Mr. Brim said that as long as, um, you know, they'll do the soil testing as they go along to make sure the depth of the groundwater is more than four feet. Actually, under this permit, I think they have to be over six feet, because they're doing a gravel removal operation, um, so it's actually gonna be even more, um, conservative than that, and so they technically won't need a mounting study as long as they stay above that six-foot threshold, which, and I believe at the last meeting, I know that one of the other gentlemen from my office was here, and he was saying that two, twice a year, somebody comes out and monitors the site, is that correct, or does it report, or what it is?
Well, federally, we're governed by the Mine Safety and Health Administration.
Okay.
So, they, they come in and monitor everything regarding the site as far as mining practices.
And so that, I guess, that, the good thing about that is it kind of takes a little bit of the onus off the board. I know, small towns, you're not gonna go out there and make sure they're going less than six feet to the groundwater, so there's a little bit of protection there, at least with regards to, uh, federal practices, so... I mean, I think they'll take care of the, the issue with regards to the four-foot offset also. Number fourteen, we have no issue with the, you know, obviously, um, the suggestion is to have the board condition the approval, such that a SWIP is, uh, done later on, prior to construction, so fourteen days prior to construction, they have to file the EPA document online, um, because they're not going in front of the Conservation Commission, typically, that's under their permit. So that's why I know, uh, Mr. Brim recommended that this come back in front of the, it comes back to this board instead, because the Conservation Commission is on board.
Yeah, that's fine.
Even to give you the document and have a receipt, so you have it on, on file, is the best way to, just to do in case something does come up. But the best thing about this site is, it's all self-contained, as long as the berm's done correctly, everything will be self-contained. If they have an erosion issue, it's gonna be self-contained in their own, own bowl there, so... Number fifteen, again, same thing with the, the Nepedes and SWIP, and the reason, the only thing we pointed out initially was, in the initial document, the sizing of the, uh, sediment basin was different than the Nepedes requirement, I know Nepedes requirement is a little more strict now, so they upped the size of the sediment basins during construction, um, and so just make sure that that was noted under the, the SWIP document, that that was taken care of correctly. Number sixteen had to do with the scale of the plans, and so as Mr. Brim said, you know, they'll give us some snapshots of some of these areas here in a, on a larger scale, and they might even be able to accomplish that on one sheet at that point, if it's just gonna be in, just so we could see, uh, like I said, that finer grading, the two-foot grading, just to make sure that there's no impact of the butters. And then number seventeen, they already took care of that on the plan, so we have no issue with seventeen, so, like I said, as Mr. Brim stated, a lot of the issues are gonna be more technical at this point than anything, and they've seen something that they can address on the plans and the calculations. They provide that, it shouldn't be, uh, anything earth-shattering, um, just make sure that the details are there with regards to, like I said, what's going on to the abutting properties, and make sure there's nothing overflowing that way, and make sure the water's going in the right order. Like I said, the best, best thing about this, and, uh, is that it is a bowl, at, at the end of the day, it's gonna stay on their property, so...
I know what, on the selectmen issue there, gravel wall permits, they reflect back to the planning boards, stormwater permits. And part of, one of the conditions on our condition report is gonna be that we have our peer review go out once a year for a general inspection, and if you're in violation, then we report to the selectmen, it's just a chain, chain of events, so... It's for everybody's best just to play nice and...
Absolutely.
Stay in business, you know?
Any questions?
Is that the monitoring board that's gonna be doing the monitoring of this site, that you were referring to?
No, it'd probably be like Whitman and Bingham would go out once a year.
Oh, they will go out.
Yeah.
What about the monitoring board, you said, it's gonna be monitored by the mining?
Yeah, we're governed by, um, EMSHA, which is like OSHA for mines. So when they come out, they do minimum of two unannounced inspections per year.
Okay.
So we have to meet all of the federal requirements for safety, grading, slope size, there's all types of things.
Runoff, does that...
Yes, any of that stuff, so they come in and we have to make sure that everything is contained, um, and like I said, they're unannounced visits. That mine inspector shows up and is to see all of our active pits, so sometimes they're there for a period of four to five days even with us.
Okay, and the town will get copies of the results of those?
They, they usually don't, I mean, we, if there's something wrong...
The government doesn't report to us, we report to the government, remember?
Yeah, well, it's, it's online.
It's a hecking lot of them, I...
All right.
Anything, anything that any of us are under, so any gravel pit, even here in town, is governed by EMSHA. So you could easily go online and you can see what those mine inspectors have found for issues, because we have to pay hefty fines.
Okay.
So obviously, we do not want to, uh, pay fines, so we want to make sure that we follow the, the federal regulations.
Okay, and one other, just a quick question, which probably doesn't mean anything, but, and also it says, proposed evacuation, uh, excavation up to sixty feet deep, is that...
That's at the deepest cut.
Yep.
So it's the tallest hill coming down. Not sixty feet deep, from top of the hill going down.
Down to the, okay, that, that just clarifies that, I mean...
They'd really be doing some mining.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be...
They'd be swimming after about ten.
All right.
We'd be creating...
I don't know much of gravel pit mining, but...
No, that's fine. So Wes, um, sum it all up, and you find what information you've got from them and coming...
Yeah, with the, with the small changes that they're gonna add to the plan, too.
Do you see any need for us to keep a public hearing open?
Yeah, I don't know if the...
Because normally, well, just that, you can do it two ways, because when we do the order of conditions, you can't, there's no public, there's no public discussion, there's no... Once you shut the dialogue down, you shut it down, you live with what we give you.
Right.
So it's totally your call, if you're in a, if you're in a big hurry, we can do it, but that's, it's not up for discussion on the, on the, um, order of conditions when you're done, if we close the public hearing ahead of time. I'm not saying there's any smoking guns out there, but you might not like what comes up on it, so it's not up for discussion, because the public hearing has been closed. So it's totally your call, what you want to do. Do you want to, I mean...
That's up to you guys.
It's totally up to the applicant.
You still leave the...
No, well, well, yeah.
Well, you'd have a condition in your conditions, that we have to meet the letter that Wes just said.
Yeah, basically.
Well, like he was saying, there was nothing major on that.
Nothing that should...
No, no, I'm just letting you know, that's all, as far as, just as a courtesy.
Nothing that should say that they're walking away from the property, they might have to, like I said, if, if the floodplain encroaches a little bit into the property.
Okay.
They'll adjust the grading a little bit.
The worst is this moves down a little bit, that's...
Exactly, that's, that's the worst case.
Yeah, okay, I guess, and then we'll say, part of the condition is that we require, well, Whitman and Bingham weapons be our peer review agent. Once a year, go out, at your cost, he's, Wes will go out for a day or a couple hours or whatever, just make sure everything's fine and, and dandy, and, uh, report back to the board, because we have it on our schedule as far as the active pits. We have a lot of them that are permitted, but they're not active, so it kind of fell sitting there, but we do have a schedule for that, and it's not wintertime, you know, it's the summertime.
Absolutely.
Right after the four-inch rainstorm.
That's time to see it, because then you know.
No, but, um, it's just, um, protocols, at least we have some type of reporting as far as what's really going on out there, so...
Yep.
Any discussions from the board right now, anybody have any possible thing, anybody in the audience have any input on this project? Okay, um, seeing none, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to, um, close the public hearing, um, with the notion that Wes is still gonna continue to, um... The, the applicant is still gonna work with Wes to, um, satisfy the...
That you still, at the end of the past, we've done, we've worked with the applicant, and you guys are drafting the conditions, is that still, you still want us to do that?
Yes, yeah, you'll be drafting the, the conditions based on...
Recordations, yeah.
Yeah. I know how to read these plans, I'm not gonna claim I know how to write them, okay? That's your bag. And yes, the one-twenty contours is unacceptable. Not for a working scale, you can't see nothing in one-twenty contours, it's fine from an aerial map, but that's about it. So that was good on a forty. Um, okay, I'll insert a motion to, uh, close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, um, all in favor? Very good.
Wonderful, thank you so much for your input.
Yep. We're not, we're not that bad, you have to bring a lawyer to you.
He's in trade.
Karen, you've been at Spencer too long.
Because I, I don't get on Spencer very often.
All right, what else we got? We wanna do the minutes, guys, I, I missed the last meeting, so somebody's gonna have to just, uh...
Yeah, we just want to do the minutes last, and just do this thing here.
Well, just do the minutes real quick, and then we can, uh, because it's only, uh, really short. Both been made, second to accept the minutes from, um, February eleventh. Any discussion on the minutes? Are you all in favor?
I'm abstaining.
I'm abstaining as well, because I, I wasn't here, so... I won't bring something up with new business, I just want, you guys to see those minutes, not the minutes, but the structure of the minutes.
You're gonna make me change them.
Oh, not, not, not the structure, I mean, I should say the content, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Okay, uh, Gambler Trucking LLC, two sixty-eight South Row. We've got a casino coming into town, what's going on tonight?
No, that's actually Andre Chaddier, who's here. Um, you and I had talked about it briefly.
Yep.
And I did a little more research into it, it's a sixty-one A Chaplin farm.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And...
It doesn't really pertain.
Right, that's my thought, so...
That's what I thought, too.
Andre and I got together, I sat down with him, and we filled out a site plan exemption request, and then...
We actually have that?
Yeah, actually...
We have a couple in front of us.
You have a copy in front of you.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
And...
I have my glasses on.
Me, that can't see either.
To be honest with you, what my thought was, is that it, it, the truck is gonna use for bringing hay to the farm from the...
Yeah, it's your control, so...
Right. Um, I did attach the waiver sign-off for you, too, at the back of your packet, if you decide to do that.
Yeah, I mean, um, it's nice to see somebody with a farm that actually uses a plate on a, on a truck, and not a Mercedes going to the beach.
You didn't get a farm plate.
We've all seen it.
All he has to do is apply for a farm plate.
Well, we'd like the young man, and this is another thing in talking with him, it, he may use the truck for other things, too, but it's, for, how much did you say? Thirty thousand pounds of hay, or bales of hay, or...
Oh, my dad alone, you, two to three thousand, but in order to get hay at a good price, you gotta go to New York, and right now, a farm plate to New York is really sketchy. Um, some guys get away with it, some guys don't, but putting the truck on the road and leaving the state without it for them is frowned upon.
Oh, okay, right.
So he does have...
So you need a commercial plate.
I need, I need a, yeah.
Commercial plate, but still for farm use.
Yep.
Yeah, um, I have no problem with the exemption, just for that reason.
Do we take a vote on it, do we just...
Can I, it's, I mean, it's off the street, right?
Yeah.
It's off the road, it's not in...
You can't see it from the street.
Yeah.
I was actually shocked it even came before us, like...
Well, everybody's covering their bases.
Yeah, no, exactly, I mean, thanks for doing things the right way.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so, uh...
I mean, let's just give us our...
So we make a motion to waive the, um, the site plan review, or is...
Uh, make a motion to accept the waiver of the site plan review.
All right, I'll second that motion. Both have been made, and second, to waive Mr. Chaddie's, uh, site plan review for parking a commercial vehicle for farm use at his, um, residence or farm, or both?
Exposed.
Both, okay, all right. All in favor?
All right.
It's unanimous, so you can take that back, right?
Getting that back, but what I need from you is, there's also, so there's that form.
Yeah.
And then, I also need a signature on...
Not quite.
Oh, okay. For Karen.
And you're not gonna be the building commissioner, but you're gonna sign that line.
All right. I play well on TV.
You have to.
Oh, there's a sign?
Yes, yeah, you have to sign it.
I've been making it, I made it, I made it, I made myself.
Is that hazel nut coffee?
No.
I keep smelling it.
I have a hint of hazel nut, my...
Yeah, it's Charlie's.
I caught a whiff.
Sorry? Caught a whiff, oh, excuse me. That's Kurt, Charlie, myself.
We should have John... They voted on it, too. So Andre, what'll happen is tomorrow morning, I will bring this to the town clerk, they'll notify you when your business certificate is ready.
Okay.
And I'll also provide you a copy of the form that's being signed right now for the exemption.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So basically, you're all set?
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
All right, see you on the...
Take care.
Thank you.
See ya.
Last week, I see Alan Drew went back for a ball in the road to fifty-five and up, is, um, was he gonna try to keep it under the eight-hundred feet?
Uh, he did a whole redesign, so, um, we really did, wouldn't, he needs to follow the process, we weren't gonna give him a whole lot of...
Okay, yeah.
Correction, but he did a, he took, originally, the original design had...
Yeah, it was all over the place.
He actually, he did like half the size.
Cluster development.
Yeah, cluster development.
Yeah, till he...
It was a full, a full metal, you can't really give him a formal answer. Yeah, I really can't, yeah, that's kind of the position we took.
Okay. Um, any, uh, next meeting is the tenth, any new business, anybody?
Yes.
Right.
So, I was working with Carter with regard to, um, with the Community Preservation Committee, and we asked for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for, we're looking into creating an affordable housing trust. What's happening is, a lot of the day mill properties are coming up for sale, and we're not equipped to, with the first right of refusal, we're not equipped to buy them and make sure that they go back to...
Affordable.
Right, so what we're looking into is a condition of a program for buying and selling of day mill properties and similar properties. We're also hoping to look into... We're also hoping to look into zoning, um, techniques for more workforce housing, so to increase the stock in Templeton. And I just wanted to keep you guys in the loop so that you're not surprised when I start saying, hey, can we look at a zoning thing?
Go ahead, John.
I just have a quick question, because I wasn't here when that day mill was, so the town has the first right of refusal?
Mm-hmm.
To buy?
And what we hope to do is to be able to buy and turn them around and still have them go to people in Templeton as a first shot and have it be affordable. Right now, they're selling at top price because we can't do anything with it.
We've lost.
Well, the biggest problem is that we don't have a, um.
We don't have a trust.
We don't know. We don't have a, we don't have a coordinator that used to take care of it. Sean Grimley was the last person that did that, and so it's shame on the town for not funding the position, or a position, not necessarily the one individual, but keeping the position open. To do just that, because what's going to happen with the town is that they're all going to get sucked up, the forty B's not going to count, and we're going to end up with another monster project shoved down our throat, for lack of better terms.
So that went through as a forty B?
Right, that's how they, that's how you skirt all the subdivision control laws and whatnot. Subventures have to be sold at, you know, below median buyer value, whatever, you know, good for the people that were able to get in there, but.
But now they're selling top dollar unless we buy them.
Right.
Well, the town has.
And we do get something for it.
They have a certain amount of time to say, you know, to find a buyer, they could only keep it on the market so long before it's like, hey, I can't, there's, there's nobody here, there's.
Correct.
How long, how long do we have to exercise our option? Is it like twenty days, thirty days?
Gosh, I just saw one not that long ago.
But the, the town would be buying it at what? At like a, at a, at a, say a forty B rate, is what you're saying? At the affordable rate?
Yes. Yes.
I don't understand that piece of it, I guess.
We can't afford to fix the roads in this town. We're going to.
Nobody, if you buy it and then sell it.
Also going to be, corrupt the CPC fund. This is going to be set up with the CPC Housing Fund.
Correct, so you're basically just fronting the money.
Right.
But what do you buy for seventeen thousand dollars?
That's what I'm trying to say.
Oh, no, 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 this is for the research and.
No, that's just to set up the commission. To do the study.
Oh, for the research, okay.
It, it's legal and research, and it's the creation of.
Oh, okay.
It, it's to move us forward. I'm sorry.
Well, there's nobody bought real estate lately?
No, 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 I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
We're going to pay market price for that. We're not going to pay.
Real estate commission is usually more than that.
And then we're going to, the town ends up subsidizing those properties?
No, so if you buy it for a hundred thousand, you sell it for a hundred thousand, correct?
It, it's not right.
I'm just, I'm throwing around numbers out there.
It's revolving. It's to keep it.
It's to keep the stock.
Right, because if it doesn't, if the town doesn't buy it, then it just goes to, it, it loses its affordable.
We lose it forever.
So that's money that we've had, and we have never done what we should have with it.
Right.
The last one was, I think it was like a hundred and fifty-six thousand. It was just a month or so ago.
Right.
And.
We didn't have a.
I want to say we had like sixty days, but.
I thought it was sixty also.
But, uh, but that was the thing. We could buy it for one fifty, but whether we had a position of, you know, affordable housing coordinate, there's never been money set aside specifically to do that.
No, no, no.
But, and now it's going to go for an open market, whatever that's going to be for.
But the thing is, I mean, at that point, you're not, you're just kind of like fronting money to turn around and sell it, so.
My, my, my point being.
It's just moving money back and forth.
My point being is that when you have.
As long as you can sell it, what if you don't, what if you sit on it?
You're hoping you sell it in the short term, not the long term. My point being is that when you have a coordinator that people have a, they have a, a place to go to, an actual individual to go, people that first time home buyers and so on and so forth, that are looking for that. Because just knowing that they're here doesn't give them any advantage, because a lot of paperwork, there's a lot of stuff they need to fill out, a lot of, you know, they need to be approved for it. And so it's not just the person counting houses, it's really that they, it's a one-on-one, you know, it's a, it's a position. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a real thing, you know, but.
Horrible shortage for elderly housing, affordable elderly. What that guy is going to, going to put down by acres, that I don't, that's not going to be real affordable, that's my book.
Oh, uh, yeah, I don't know what the price point was on, over, over a hundred.
That trust that would come and lock that money in so it couldn't be.
Over a hundred thousand.
You can't go, you know, well, we need some money and go take it. It's, once it gets in that trust, it's locked in there just for that, which is.
They're making paths through people's woods.
I got a feeling I'm going to be learning as I go along.
Just think of how smart you're going to be at the end of this.
Well, the median.
Despicable more than you are now.
Oh, yeah.
The dude's saying that the, 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 the median house, uh, price in Massachusetts, now keep in mind, that's everywhere from the Berkshires to Boston, is almost four hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, I'm sure.
Was it?
There have been some ridiculous prices.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Recently.
On that note, uh, motion to adjourn. Are we done on new business?
That's all I had for you. I just wanted to keep you in the loop.
Okay, it's a loop already. All right.
Still move.
We're adjourned. Right, everybody adjourned?
Yes.
Okay.